Counsel, next we have scheduled appearances by Scott Brown and Cory Wagner regarding small wireless facilities located in the Festiva Court, Compton Crossing subdivision. I do have four cards here, too. So here's what we're going to do. Mr. Brown and Ms. Cory Wagner, would you each have three minutes? If you'd like to individually come up here, state your name and address, whoever is first. I'll let each of you speak for three minutes, then I'm going to read these, and then I'm going to invite Ryan from our city to talk about the small cells, things and processes available to us, as well as the history of how we've treated these. And then, Counsel, if there's any conversation that we have with staff, but you will be directing your comments to us and not to staff during this time. So who would like to go first? Scott or Cory? Come on up, please.
Yeah.
If you would come up here and state your name and address for the record. Yes, ma'am. And there's a light there. When it turns yellow, you have 30 seconds left.
Okay. My name is Carrie Wagner. I live at 2305 East Foley. Is that what you asked?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for our six minutes today. Scott and I both live in Chandler. I own my home and I'm raising my family there. I run a successful business in this community, and I'm speaking today to defend my home and my family from a dangerous and unnecessary invasion. Densified 4G and 5G wireless telecommunications facilities, or WTFs for short, being constructed next to our homes. No one, and I mean no one, wants to live closer than 2,500 feet from a cell tower of any G because there's already real evidence of harms from around the U.S. due to insufficient regulation of maximum effective radiated power from these WTFs. Public safety harms, privacy harms, and property value harms. In some cities and other states, this has been properly managed through zoning laws, so no cell towers of any size or any G will be constructed in public rights-of-way or residential zones. That is a real solution. But thanks to a ridiculous 2017 Arizona State bill that we're working to repeal, HB 2365, the onus is on you, the city council, to pass local laws that will actually deliver public safety, regardless of any existing federal or state statutes, regulations, or guidelines. So we have a real problem in Chandler. Our laws are in conflict, and the bug stops with you, our council members, who must deliver public safety. Despite the mountains of wireless industry propaganda, your hands are not tied. You can pass a local ordinance that regulates the maximum electromagnetic power allowed through the air, enough to enable telecommunications service and no higher. Such a local ordinance will not result in effective prohibition of telecommunications service and therefore is legal and defensible with respect to HB 2365 and the 1996 Telecommunications Act. The wireless industry and possibly even your city attorney might tell you otherwise, but they would be wrong. They would be thinking too far inside the box. You can set policy to properly balance the needs of real persons, Chandler residents, voters, taxpayers, and my family and yours, versus the needs of artificial persons, billion-dollar telecom companies. We need you to protect us. Full stop. Please invite the public to the table to work with you, the city staff, to define a creative and protective local ordinance. I have expressed no matter of mere concern but solely matters of substance, fact, and law. Thank you. Scott and I'll cover some more specifics.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Our next person coming up, Scott Brown. And again, sir, if you would state your name and address for the record.
Yes.
And you will have three minutes as well.
My name is Scott.
Well timed, by the way.
You did great. This is Scott Brown. I am Scott Brown. I attest that what I'm about to say is true and accurate. I live in Chandler as well. I'm a real estate agent, and I see in and out that property values go up and down based on, you know, nuclear power plants, railroad tracks, busy roads, and of course, cellphone towers. Cellphone towers are starting to be built in and among our homes on public rights-of-way, which have been a no-no since, for the last 30 years since they've come about. So what's starting to happen is that basically they're densifying and rolling out more cell towers. The two in my neighborhood are 1,200 feet apart, I'm 300 feet from one, 800 from another. But basically, I think the residents should come first. What's starting to happen is the home values are going to start to drop. Each wireless telecommunications that's in a public right-of-way can be up to like 30 feet away from an emitting tower. The second telecom companies have kind of manipulated state and local laws and unwittingly participating in liability of transfer. In short, there's no insurance for the coming claims that will be here in the near future from the injury, illness, and death of microwave radiation in the city as a joint venture partner you are co-locating. They're even called authority poles, according to HB 2364, under your jurisdiction. Your electromagnetic fields that are emitted are considered a pollution. When you look at insurance, pollution isn't covered. So there's a pollution clause, normally clause 32, that won't be covered by nearly every carrier, including general liability, Zurich Sun, Hartford, CFC underwriting, and Lloyds of London, which is usually thought to be the top. So anyway, it states, "We will not pay anything under this policy claim expenses in respect to electromagnetic fields, any liability nature, direct or indirectly caused by inconnection with contributed to or arising from electromagnetic fields or electromagnetic radiation." This needs to be addressed by you guys because this is a huge liability for you, as well as all the city, as people begin to get hurt. So I believe the city has a legitimate right to require insurance from those companies. And I guess I've done a little research. This pollution clause is probably the biggest sneaky aspect of it, but you can either require them, enlist you as additionally insured as the city of Chandler without the exclusion clause. It would cost them more money, of course. Or self-insurance. These are billion-dollar companies installing these towers right in our front yards. So this is a problem as well. The problem is that doing also direct business with them, a lot of times they'll create a shell corporation that allows VZW, for example, to install this pole, and they'll insure it. But what can happen is that the shell company goes bankrupt when the first claim shows up, and Big Verizon and T-Mobile aren't affected. And, you know, basically, there's no payout.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes, thank you. Is there any, no questions, right? Done?
Well, I'd like to hear from, I'd like to read these, and then have Ryan come, then we have a conversation.
Mayor, I got a quick question for Scott.
Okay. A quick question. Go ahead.
And this is allowed because it's a public process. That's why we had you come in a public process. We could have dialogue. That's why this is allowed, so no problem. If you came on to unschedule public appearance, like I told you earlier today, we couldn't have this dialogue, so thank you for coming. I did visit the site, your neighborhood, on Saturday. I did see the poles. I did see the numerous cones that you can't even park in some of your own areas. I seen some of the construction and the upheaval, I guess, that's happening in your neighborhood. But one of the things I wanted to ask you about is notification. What kind of notification did you, did your neighbor get?
There is no notification. Holes were dug, and I was curious. I saw them for about a week, and I said, huh, I wonder what that is. And eventually, a city rep was coming by and looking at the holes, and I said, hey, what are they building? And he said cellphone towers. Bill Calber, I think. Actually, I don't know if you're familiar with him, but... So that was my first notice, and so that kind of concerned me because I live there, and I'm also concerned about my property value, as well as the radiation aspect. So, yeah, that's, there was no notice. And as I've started to go down what appears to be a rabbit hole, this 5G thing, there's a lot of conspiracy going on and these exaggerated claims, but the more I've talked to PhDs in electromagnetic radiation, there's a local guy who lives here and consults many places, a guy named Marv. But basically, what is the biggest concern, I guess, that I didn't able, wasn't able to say, is that they call these small wireless transmission facilities. And that sounds like, oh, well, it's kind of like a little mini Wi-Fi router that would be in your own house. You know, that, that's not that bad. But what we're finding is that the typical macro towers that we're all kind of scared of and look like nuclear power plants or something that would cause cancer, well, they're 200 feet tall, have eight to 10, you know, radio emitting things.
Mr. Brown, I have to respect, I have to respect the question and where you're going, if you don't mind. And I get all that.
Could I get like 20 seconds to finish that?
No, no, I'm okay. I just want to make sure. So you're telling me, and you live the closest to the poles, correct?
I'm not the closest, no. There are neighbors who are 30 feet.
So your neighbor, your neighbors that live closest to the poles, did they get notification?
No.
So they just showed up one day and like, start digging holes and putting cones all over and?
Yeah. They dug holes. There was one aspect, there's many construction aspects that I'm worrying about, but basically, the fiber optics installers, if they're digging into your yard, they got a door hanger that just said, hey, we're going to do some construction. If you have questions, call me.
And those were all the little marked areas where they actually dug on some of the properties?
Yeah. Well, they've started the digging today, the last several days, I guess, and I think it's going to continue on.
And does it go past on personal, on your property?
Yeah, beyond sidewalks.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just beyond the sidewalk. So it's actually on some of your property?
Yes.
Like your lawns. I saw the orange jaw, wherever it was, the painting on some of the lawns down there. So they're not even staying in the right-of-way? And that's why I want to make sure I'm clear here.
My understanding...
And I asked this question with staff, but I want to make sure what I saw, what I saw that day is I saw there's chalk marks or paint marks along lawns and beyond the sidewalk made on the streets.
Yeah. I mean, my understanding of public rights-of-way don't necessarily end at the sidewalk, although that is a nice visual where a fence post usually indicates a property line, but public rights-of-way do extend up to 10 feet into guarded areas where someone might be watering grass and have trees.
Right. So they're going to dig that up and then replace it the way it is, which?
Yeah, they have to return it completely to as if they've never been there.
Okay.
Is my understanding.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Do you mind if I finish that one point I was making a little bit? And that was just this, that these large cellphone towers that are considered macro towers emit a little more radiation, but because they're 200 feet tall, there's a dissipation of power that happens by the time it reaches my house or your house. So our cellphones work. With these small ones, they're not. They're pretty much just as strong, and they don't, they're lower to the ground now, and so someone in a second-story building as close as 12 feet away will get literally a million times more radiation. And I know that's a big number, but that's a literal, actual number that I would love to quote. If you have further questions, I'd love to get Marv or some experts. I guess ultimately, so I stopped being long-winded, is I'd like to motion or urge you guys to motion of some sort of convene a council or a committee where not just me, I'm a real estate guy, but we need some people who are kind of more familiar with radio frequencies and electromagnetic radiation so we can come together. It's a, it's a true concern for every one of us. If you live in Alcatel in a $10 million house?
Scott?
They're going to put it there, too. All right. Sorry, I'm long-winded. Thank you.
You made me look bad, Scott. That's all right. I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
I would like to read a couple of the comments from people here and then invite Ryan Peters to come up. So Ashley McClure wrote that she's concerned about property values decrease due to small cell towers. Sherry DeLong writes, "5G wireless technology poses threats to our personal privilege, personal security, and personal freedom. This technology will allow smart devices used in homes to be equipped with wireless transceivers that will communicate with 5G grid. This will not, this not only will expose us to those radiation, but also allow..." Ooh, a lot of writing on the back. "...companies to mine our data without consent to other entities. The implications to personal freedom, privacy, safety are dire. Capping the power on cell, small cell wireless facilities will inhibit ability to irradiate us as their ability to mine our data compromise privacy. Courageous use of authority in our operations and power kept the maximum ERP at providing 85 decibel-mil watts of signal strength for stated desired radius, no higher. Policed by a few for new facilities deny applications for sensitive locations that are incomplete, unneeded, or lack need for review." Third one, Lenore Brown, "Heart conditions, concerned about heart conditions regarding 5G installations." Lastly, Benjamin Benulis, apologize if I mispronounced that. "5G wireless deploys xenobiotic pulse-modulated microwave radiation, harmful to human health. I ask that, that those create a new wireless ordinance that limits radiation from towers, rejects all permit applications that are incomplete or erroneous." So Ryan, I'd like to invite you to come up. I know you're going to talk about the history of how we got here, as well as address any of the comments so stated. Ryan Peters.
All right. I'll do my best, Mayor. Thank you. Counsel, I appreciate the opportunity to converse with you tonight about the history of small wireless facilities in the city of Chandler. As most of us in the room know, in 2017, House Bill 2365 passed the legislature, and Governor D.C. signed it in late March of that year. It's also worth important, it's also worth noting that the legislature passed it out with almost unanimous support. There's only one no vote on the bill as it made its way through the process, and that's through the work that the cities did to fight for what rights we were allowed to fight for, and the collaboration with wireless industry to recognize that balance that we need to, we needed to find in order to accommodate additional infrastructure opportunities, but also, you know, protect where we are allowed to protect and not bounded by federal law. And so effectively, what the, what the bill said is it must allow wireless facilities in the right-of-way and on city-owned streetlights. And it's allowed by rights in the right-of-way and public utility easements. The bill very clearly laid out that there are no zoning, zoning approval is not allowed if less than 50 feet tall. If greater than 50 feet tall, then there's a different process that's established, and we work through that system appropriately. The bill also outlined maximum fees that we're allowed to charge, both for plan review and to use the right-of-way and to access our infrastructure in the right-of-way. However, the city does maintain the ability to require licenses for small wireless facilities, and we're able to develop standard terms and conditions and amend codes and other processes. So as we fast forward about six to nine months, we worked collaboratively with the wireless industry, as well as the residents, to come up with a, the implementation of 2365. We met in council work session to receive guidance and ultimately presented to the city council for adoption in December of 2017, standard ordinance number 4778, which adopted the standard terms and conditions, as well as a technical design manual. The master license and the standard terms ensure that there's uniformity in the agreements and uphold statutory expectations for the wireless companies like the FCC RF compliance. It's something that's within the jurisdiction of the FCC, and it's something that we require them to comply with and demonstrate compliance before we can proceed with a permit. But ultimately, the oversight of that RF standard is by the FCC. We do have local requirements in there, such as insurance and letter of credit and other The licensing agreement also ensures that the installation is safe by establishing engineering standards that do not interfere with other utilities or infrastructure, can support the additional weight, and does not hinder any of the traveling public's view. So something called a site triangle, which I think we've heard about in times past where, you know, signs or obstructions can't really get in the way of the traveling public. So we do the plan review to ensure that, that these are safely installed in the right-of-way. But ultimately, if they meet all the permit conditions and the conditions established in statute, we are required to approve them. There's no additional approval authorized by statute. And finally, we authorize the fee schedule, which effectively ratified the fees that were outlined in statute. And that was in January of 2018. Just a quick overview of the federal regulations. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 vested a lot of authority in the FCC to govern the deployment of telecommunications services. On September 27th of 2018, so a few short months after the Arizona Legislature passed out their bill, the FCC issued an order that effectively created federal rules for all states to follow and covered many of the same areas that the Arizona Legislature debated. The order was more restrictive in some areas and more generous in other areas. But ultimately, Arizona law was preserved and is the framework under which we administer our smart, small wireless program. There are also a number of legal challenges to new FCC rule from entities across the country, including the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, which were ultimately consolidated by, in the case, in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals of the City of Portland versus the FCC. Just this past August of 2020, the Ninth Circuit ruled in that case and ruled in favor of the FCC on most of the, most of their established rules. It upheld their authority to decide RF standards, and it upheld their prohibition on any kind of moratorium on the installation of, the implementation of small wireless facility sites. Excuse me. However, municipalities prevailed on the aesthetic standards that we fought so hard to maintain as part of the Arizona bill. The FCC did rule, in fact, in favor of the cities and towns to uphold that standard. So just to give you a few visuals, this is what they could have been. These are, this is an example of a few sites that didn't quite have the same aesthetic standards and were being erected in various parts of the country. We didn't have our own experience to draw from yet here in Chandler. But as we developed those standard terms and conditions, as well as the design standards, which, you know, by the way, became a model for many of the cities across the state, this is ultimately what we got. As you noticed, the, the towers themselves and the antennas are much smaller. I also want to draw attention to the tower on the far right with the two poles. This just demonstrates our, our desire to make sure that it maintains the aesthetic of the existing streetscape, and you can kind of see that, as well as the beefier structure that's designed to support the additional weight. So not only does it blend in, but it supports that additional weight. Here's a couple of pictures of the ground equipment. As you can see, some of the pictures, you can see the ground equipment out in the open, and some have screening around the ground-mounted radio equipment. And then on this one, just additional ground equipment pictures. And I kind of want to draw attention to the electrical meters. There's been some, some concern that we have had over RF, and it's something that we take very seriously here in the city of Chandler. And we've asked that the wireless companies install some sort of kill switch. So whenever there's an emergency or a maintenance worker that needs to go up and maintain the, the streetlight for its intended purpose, they're able to power down that site if they need to, and work in close proximity, and then power it back up.
Yeah.
And then in the case of emergency responders, if there's a down pole or something, there's the opportunity to jump into the kill switch and just kill the power and respond to the scene, and then the company will respond afterwards and restore the property. This is a snapshot of where they're currently located in the city of Chandler. There's approximately 130, if I recall, sites that are erected, and as you can tell, they're mostly in the denser areas. It likely follows a trend of where there may be coverage gaps or a higher demand from some of the customers on providing that service to these areas. So just a quick overview of the permitting and construction process. So these sites all come in with a preliminary technical review. That includes a site location review, a desired pole submitted by the carrier. Some of the potential conflicts are identified. Design and aesthetics concerns are addressed for the specific location, and the idea is to reduce the impact, both in construction and ultimate installation, on the residents and the businesses that are nearby. And then we go into a plan review. This is post-preconstruction or a preliminary technical review. Ensure that that is all being worked out ahead of time so that the ground's not broken open, and then we have to wait months and months with an active construction site for them to wait for, for power to hook up or any other kind of, any other kind of needs. And then we attach permit conditions, and these include items such as notification and other variables that are really site unique and site-specific, and really goes to the work and the, the professional look that our, our staff looks at these particular sites. And then for the pre-construction meeting, we verify the utility locations. So Arizona Blue Stake Law requires any kind of digging to go ahead and verify if there's going to be any kind of conflicts. We're not going to break anything under, underground. We evaluate any unforeseen conflicts or potential pavement impacts, reduce the impacts to residents and businesses. We determine the color scheme requirements. Again, those aesthetic standards and design standards, make sure it matches. And then discuss any potential traffic control impacts, including anticipated closures. And then finally, during construction, we, again, require the companies to provide advanced notice to the affected residents or businesses. We provide daily work and inspection notifications to the city. We provide, or we ask that they provide independent testing reports and bore profiles, again, to just ensure that the construction does not create any unsafe conditions. And then we ensure that all landscape, sidewalk, and pavement restoration is to be restored in like or better condition. So just a quick couple of slides on the notifications in this particular area. The two houses in pink identify the most immediately impacted homes by the, the site. That little red dot is this actual pole location. And then the professional staff advised the wireless company to expand that notification out to those homes that are identified in purpose, because they may actually see some construction traffic or may have some, some other impact in the area. Just wanted to get full awareness from the, from those most in vicinity of that for the upcoming construction. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have. But I didn't...
Ryan, thanks for that, that detailed information. Why do we, why are we asking for a kill switch?
Mayor, Councilmember Stewart, the kill switch is the opportunity for us to cut power, and I'm not an electrical engineer, but my understanding is it depowers the site so we can work safely around it.
So it's strictly for power, has no other, no other reason for it, just power?
Mayor, Councilmember Stewart, correct.
Thank you.
So, so Ryan, this is, again, I'm just bouncing from what I heard from our residents and some of the comments. So this is able to be done on, on right-of-way, and as, as Mr. Brown said, right-of-way does extend, so we're not actually installing these on private property, although obviously it, right-of-way extends past the sidewalks and, but this is predetermined, and so that's, that is true, right? First of all, we would never put these on, or never allow these on private property without the, without the permit of the person?
Mayor, that's correct. The private property requires a whole different process, and there are public utility easements that are actually approved as part of the underlying property rights. And so the state statute did authorize anything within the right-of-way or the public utility easements to be accessed by the wireless providers.
Secondly, it looked like the announcements that were offered, the two pink, the four purples. So the concern with this was not the question which was covered under, it's not our purview to say you cannot put these there, but the, if I'm understanding from what you read from state and federal, but the notices were put for those that would be most directly impacted by cones and constructions in front of their house, people digging trucks. Was that the intention of that?
Mayor, that's correct. So the, the notice comes directly from our permits, and it specifically says, "The permit shall provide reasonable advanced notice to all affected residents and businesses prior to the construction crews entering the right-of-way. If a resident or business manager is not available for personal contact, then the door hanger or such printed notification will be left at the location with the contact information."
Okay. And thirdly, I, I heard... And thirdly, I, I, I heard from both people, a couple of these concerns with the RF itself. But by FCC, by state, what purview? It sounds like we have aesthetic, um, designed tweaking. We, we can work with people concerning the amount of notice. What is available to any municipality related to the, the presence of 4G, 5G going up in the neighborhoods?
Mayor, the FCC and the Ninth Circuit, uh, ruling on that FCC, uh, rule upheld the FCC's jurisdiction over the RF, NEPA, and any other federal requirements. And so it's up to the FCC to enforce, to come up with the standards and enforce those standards. And it specifically, uh, makes a reference to a prohibition by cities and towns and state governments on making that a consideration of their, um, process.
Then one last question. I'll see if anyone else has, I'm sure we do. I, I know about two months ago, we, um, we allotted to the Chandler Unified School District, uh, about a quarter of a million dollars to purchase routers for, um, for families with children that, that they could continue learning and, um, and not be at a disadvantage if, for economic purposes. I was looking at the map that you sent out and, and it covers my home, covers this area, covers seemingly a lot of, of North Chandler, which, uh, could, is probably more where a lot of those routers and dollars went to with CUSD. Is this, is this going to further or help them by having a faster internet to be able to do schoolwork? I'm just, I, I think we, we don't, we gave the, the, the school the ability to buy a thousand routers in mostly North Chandler. How will this, does this impact that or tell me about that, your thoughts?
Mayor, adding additional sites will certainly enhance the service in an area. I can't speak specifically to, um, uh, any build out plans that a company may have, but they try to track with where they've seen coverage gaps and more demand from, uh, the marketplace on, uh, receiving additional bandwidth.
Okay. Council, additional questions? Vice Mayor and then Stewart and then on this side.
Thank you, Ryan. Mine's going to be a little more in-depth and probably not going to have the answer and we can take it offline. But, um, one of the interesting questions again was the power factor or the intensity that the 5G is allowed. So I, I think I'd like to maybe dive into a little and see where the FCC said that these towers are allowed to, at what height, at what intensity level, and just like a microwave, it is the same principle. However, there are different power factors within a microwave. So similar principle with these, with the 5G, you know, what power level is FCC allowed at a certain height? If it's a 20-foot tower versus a 50-foot tower, does that intensity change? And then as the follow-on question to that, and I know you're probably going to be able to answer that question, but you know, I'm assuming that the FCC has that somewhere in the, in the regulations on what that is. And then what are we doing in order to ensure and validate that those that are installing 5G are complying by that? And if there's a regular checkup that is done to ensure they're not, you know, again, keeping it low because the more intense they can make it, again, the further reach it would wind up having. So, um, let me take that one offline unless you happen to know that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, my, my only response, again, because this isn't part of our jurisdiction, is that we defer to the FCC to do their duty. And, uh, they have the obligation to set these standards and the Ninth Circuit upheld that obligation. And, uh, there was an, uh, uh, one of the questions the court was asked is if the FCC should update their RF standards? And the court went ahead and deferred and said the FCC is managing this appropriately. It's well within their jurisdiction. They did not comment on the levels themselves, again, because it's not the judiciary's jurisdiction, but they did defer to the FCC to come up with those standards. So to answer your question about enforcement, we asked for a certification letter per state statute and what we're, what we're authorized to do. We're, we're sensitive to it, but again, there's only so much authority we have over.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I've had my head down, doing some homework, taking notes. So, um, you know, this is an interesting conversation. I think, you know, our neighbors are coming to council, they're sending us emails, asking us to advocate or to do some homework or to help them. They don't necessarily have the resources to find out the information, or maybe they do. We're all basically been inundated with information about this and they're asking, I think, for our help. So, um, that's the first thing. I think it's also important to understand that, you know, the state is tied to our hands. And, and as evidenced by legislation that's made it to the Ninth Circuit, which basically said, "We can't discuss health issues related to approving or not approving these things." That makes me scratch my head. The other thing is, is that, um, um, we've seen movies like Darkwater and Aaron Brockovich and, um, you know, there's several others that are out there related to big corporations and big companies basically running roughshod over neighborhoods or running all, all over people, uh, for the sake of, of the dollar. And it takes a community to come forward and, and speak up about it before you, you make change. So I'd like to maybe follow that, that, that request of, you know, seeing if our legal team can look into this and see if we can set up a subcommittee to kind of research this, to find out what that board says. If it, you know, if it's like factual and really get some good data on this and, and support our neighbors before we get too far along with this. I'm all for being a community of innovation and make sure we have fast internet and we can help our kids and we can do all the things that we need to do as a fast-moving city. Um, and if we can find information that says these things are fine, um, then great. If not, then, then we need to probably support our community and, and dig into this a little bit deeper.
So I think we can ask our, again, for whatever further information. Again, I, 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 I understand the sensitivities of our, of hands being tied by what we can do, can't do, but I, uh, between Ryan and our city attorney, I, I think they can look for further information for us on this. So, Councilmember Orlando.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I echo your comments. I think this needs further studying. I think more data is being developed. I had several emails this morning from an individual that spoke at the Scottsdale City Council and was able to prove, at least in her mind, that, that they were not abiding by the, the admittance that they said they were going to do on their transmission. So my question to staff is, how do we verify that? How do we verify that they are living up to that admission?
Mayor, Councilmember, the verification is within the jurisdiction of the FCC.
What's our, let me, let me backtrack, let me backtrack a little bit. They give you, they want a permit, which by this process, we're only charging 50 bucks. That's probably the cheapest permit I've ever seen in this city in my 19 years on this council. That's pretty darn cheap. When you went through that process, it costs us a lot more time and effort. That inspector going out to see the hole probably cost us a hundred bucks, a hundred bucks to go do that. So they're getting away with that and that's beside the point. We could work that issue separately. I think they really pulled a fast one on us because I was here when we did the towers, the original cell towers. It was a good process. It was a permit process. They came in, they asked where you think we should go. We worked, we traded with them. About 95% of those cell towers went in with no problem. A couple we had to say no to, but we had some local control. We don't have any control at all here. It seems like we're done. Thank you very much. And by the way, we're going to cost you money, city, because it's cost you more to inspect this and put the permit process and all the paperwork that goes with it. Okay, I don't want to get into that. I don't want to rabbit hole. But here's, this, 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 uh, notification, does it have the Verizon letterhead or is it, whose letterhead is it or whose hanger is it? Is the city logo on this thing or is it just from the company?
Mayor, Councilmember, my understanding is it's the incumbent on the wireless provider or the contractor who's doing work on behalf of the provider to provide the notice with all the information on there.
Does it have the city logo on it?
It's not a notification we, that, it's not our notification. We're not the ones doing the construction.
My, my question is this, I'm a resident, I see the city logo of Chandler on a, a thing, I say, okay, the city's doing something. I think nothing of it. Two days later, I see a hole and gee, it's a 5G tower. I would be concerned too. So I, I ask you to go investigate that and let's find out what they're, how the notification is being done. If you have that answer right here, I want to know what's on that notification. And I want to know if they're getting positive feedback, if they're getting, because this, we get one or two phone calls, but that's it. I'm concerned about that. I, I don't know who is lives in that two or three houses, they got the notification or not. I don't know. But I'm concerned about that. We need to do our due diligence and say, let's take a look at the process. And I really like to capture the cost of this thing because we got to go back to our legislators and telling us, you put this mandate on us and now you're, you're costing us more money to put this pole in and they're making the money, not us. And then who's maintaining these poles? The service provider?
Mayor, Councilmember, that's correct.
So this pole that was put in there just recently, was that pole there before? They just replaced it or is it a brand new pole?
Mayor, Councilmember, in most cases in Chandler, there're going to be brand new poles because the underlying pole doesn't have the structural.
Agreed. So aesthetics, that one picture you showed, you have a standing pole right there and you put a second one. Isn't that aesthetics issue?
Mayor, Councilmember, I may have failed to mention it, that second pole comes down. You have to keep the light in there for traffic and then the second pole, once, once the new pole is operational and serving its function, uh, the second one comes down.
And this pole looks smaller than our normal poles. Did we validate that, that this pole is shorter that they put in by the mailbox? And Brian, I'm only asking these questions, we can get all these questions answered, but these are a lot of questions that I just visited the site for five minutes and I said, wow, that pole looks shorter than our normal streetlight poles.
Mayor, Councilmember, there may have been some design conditions. It may have been a like-for-like pole. I think that's the expectation of staff is that you replace the pole with, uh, the, a similar pole. And you don't, you don't go too high, um, you don't go too low. Obviously, we have a sensitivity on those radio antennas, but then also there's a height limit, um, that, that is required and we don't necessarily want these things towering over, um, throughout the city. And again, it's case by case.
And maybe that's a good idea to tower over the site because like the gentleman said earlier, it's not beaming into the second floor. Again, I don't want to get into the health history because I'm not a doctor up here, but I do know there is ample data out there that says there's potential, and I came from the cellular industry. So there is ample data out there that says this could affect some folks. There's ample data out there that says, no, it doesn't. But again, let me just go to the permit process here. When these companies come in, do they give you a master plan? Or do they just say, I'm going to come in and we're going to do this section of Chandler today? Is it one company come in and then the next come in or do they coordinate it all? Or there's going to be three separate poles?
Mayor, Councilmember, my understanding is it's, it's case by case. Sometimes the ultimate goal of industry would be to do a mass application, but because the conditions of each permit are going to be different, we have not been able to facilitate a mass application. And each one requires a lot of staff work to validate, to ensure that the underground conditions are, are safe and then work through the, the design process. And so, uh, a, a dump of 10, I forget, I think the statute authorized up 25, I believe. It may have been less, um, at the same time. That doesn't work from a staff processing standpoint because there are shot clocks that we have to approve things in a certain amount of time. And, and so there's a lot of front-end work that the staff does in order to make sure that everything that's within our, our jurisdiction, um, we're able to control and get a good outcome for, uh, the residents and provide that balance to the companies.
Oh, for 50 bucks. We're good. Okay.
And a new pole.
A new pole. Yeah, that's right, a new pole. So how about the electricity? Is this metered? Are these things metered?
Mayor, Councilmember, correct. They are individually metered.
And, and we validated that. We verified that, right?
Mayor, Councilmember, correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure of that. So, um, you know, um, I'm a little frustrated with you because like I said, I'm used to a process that was pretty, pretty, pretty clean. Obviously, the, uh, industry, uh, didn't like that clean process. So they went around, they, and did an end run on us. And they said, thank you very much Chandler, thank you very much Scottsdale, oil, great cities, Phoenix, we're going to do an end run on you. Because you know why? We don't trust you because our bottom line is at stake. And that's what they said to us right now. Our bottom line is at stake? In fact, we're not even going to pay you for the work you're doing because our bottom line is at stake. And it's frustrating to me and it's frustrating. I've been looking at this for a year now, Ryan. You and I talked about this at the National League of City. We had an attorney come up and chat with us about this. And there are things we can do. And to throw up our hands up right now, I'm a little frustrated. I agree with the Councilmember Stewart. I think we should put together a small committee and really look at this thing, work with other cities, work with other towns, National League of City, let's work with our legislators and let's fix this problem. It's only going to get worse. I'm not, again, I'm not a health expert. I'm not going to even go into that. I'm looking at the control we have in this community to put these towers up. It's lost. We have no control. We have no control. This aesthetic thing is BS as far as I'm concerned. It was a giveaway at the bottom line so that you could say we gave you something. So I'm, I'm inclined to look at this issue. I'm inclined to open it up. I'd be willing to serve on some kind of committee, work with the residents, working with some, with some legal scholars, working for some individuals. And let's say we give the legislators some good thoughts when they come back in legislation in January to say, this is what we should be doing. And then go to our, our federal legislators, say this is what we should be doing because we did study this issue. So anyway, I'm done for that.
So, so far we have asked, excuse me. So far we have asked for some additional information. We'll see what that leads to in terms of the ability of, is there areas in which we can, we can apply leverage or working with some other cities with this. So, Councilmember Row.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I imagine this sounds redundant, but I'm going to get my two shakes in here. Ryan, uh, thank you for a very good presentation and, uh, thank you for working on this on our behalf, on behalf of the city of Chandler. And I want to commend the citizens that come out and have concerns and I hope that we will work to try to get them some of the answers that they would like. And those are my statements. Thank you.
All right. Council, any additional comments? All right? Thank you and thank you, residents who are here tonight as well. We're going to move on to